Hi, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight. Welcome to our Public Board of Education meeting. We called our meeting to order earlier in our closed executive session, so thank you for your patience as we file in. Really quickly, I just wanted to add that in closed executive session, we did add a matter involving pending litigation. And yeah, so I'm excited. I hope you all are excited. We're in the last, what, day and a half of school. Excited for our eighth graders who are going to be having their salutes tomorrow and our high school graduates on Thursday. And summer vacation is almost upon us, so I hope everyone is taking precautions during this heat wave. And we are very excited to learn more about our Board of Education candidates to fill our open position. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Adarhold.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here this evening. As Ms. McEwen mentioned tonight, we're going to have our opportunity to interview several candidates from Plainsboro with respect to the vacancy that occurred due to the resignation of Robin Zovich from the Board of Education. So this evening, there have been seven candidates that submitted. And we will go through a process that was outlined of an opportunity for each candidate. If anyone looked back in 2022, there's no process that has to be replicated every time. So in 2022, when we had a vacancy, when Mr. Whitfield went to the township council in West Windsor, we had all, we had 13 candidates. 11 came that evening. We had two rounds, a round of six and then a round of five. And they actually took this particular seats where the board sits, and we sort of went down the row. We're not going to do that this time. We are going to, we've done a random generator for the candidates. We will have one come up to the podium, give their three minutes for their opportunity to present a statement, and present feedback on the resume, why they want to run for the board and whatnot. That's stated in what was posted on the website. And then there'll be four consistent questions that gets asked. We're going to ask the other candidates during this time to sit out in the lobby, so they're not hearing. And we're going to ask really to honor not streaming the video, not, you know, trying to have anyone from inside the room texting questions to their friends or family members, that we want to have a fair and transparent process for those that are trying to fill the seat. And we greatly appreciate the seven individuals for putting their names into the process. This particular vacancy, because this is an expiring seat, expires at the end of December, so the individual that gets selected, what will happen tonight is the seven individuals will go through a process. The board will then recess into closed session. During the time that the board deliberates regarding the interviews, a statement will come up onto the board, or Louis will put it up on the screen, just that we're still deliberating in closed session, and we will be returning back to public session. That really will be just obviously for the folks in the room to know, but really for the viewing audience to know that we're still actively deliberating, because what will happen then is if the board reaches consensus, and they'll come back out, make a motion, and the individual will be appointed to the board. They won't be sworn in tonight, because to be sworn in, you have to be fingerprint cleared, and then you can be sworn in by Dr. Russo, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance, in the interim from the fingerprint clearance to the next sitting meeting. And once your fingerprint cleared and you've been appointed by the board, and Dr. Russo swears you in, that individual will become an active board member at that moment. So if we have committee meetings over the summer and the person's already cleared, they can then sit in those meetings as a full-fledged board member and whatnot. So it's really a matter of just timing and process with fingerprint clearance. And so we will, from an order perspective, there's the first opportunity for public comment, and then we will go through the agenda. There's two committee reports this evening. And then we will have the voting section, second opportunity for public comment, and then before or right around new business is when the interviews will take place. And then we'll go from there, do the interviews, then recess into closed session for the deliberation, come back out, make the motion. Now technically, if the board doesn't reach consensus, within the law, within the rules of how far we can stretch the vacancy, it could be the July meeting still. We're still within the 95-day window, I believe it's 95 or 93-day window at that moment, at that time of the July meeting. I don't anticipate that, but technically, the board does not have to have a final decision tonight. And so that's the process for this. With respect to the school year, I also just want to echo the comments. We have middle school salutes tomorrow night. We have graduation for North and South on Thursday. Obviously, we're coming to the conclusion of a year in the middle of a very dangerous heat wave. There's been tremendous amount of activities happening in our schools with end-of-the-year celebrations and parties and PTA functions, and want to thank all those volunteers and all the members of our public that have gone above and beyond in this time period to come out and create those celebrations for our staff and our students, and just to wish everyone a wonderful conclusion of the year and a wonderful summer, and a safe summer. And with that, I'll turn it back to Ms. McEwen.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Adarhold. So hang out through the regular meeting, and then we will hear and meet from our great panel of candidates that submitted their applications. And now we have our first opportunity for public comments. The board invites thoughts and reactions on agenda items and items of concern from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 60 minutes. Do we have any comments for this first session? Oh, I saw movement. I thought maybe there is someone coming up, so seeing none, I will move to close this public comment period and move on to committee reports. So I'll ask Dana to give us a rundown of Administration and Facilities.
Good evening, everyone. The Administration and Facilities Committee met on June 17. Updated job descriptions were shared with the committee, including Assistant Director of Technology and the Supervisor of Instructional Technology. The committee recommends the job descriptions for approval on tonight's agenda. Next was an athletics update. High School South Boys Volleyball captured the BCSL Tournament Championship and advanced to the South Group Three Sectional Finals. Boys Tennis had an outstanding season, defeating North to win the Central Group Three Sectional Title, and then going on to claim the Group Three Tournament. Tennis Coach Rich Arnold celebrated a milestone with his 300th Boys Tennis win during the state semifinal match. Onto North. High School North Boys Volleyball advanced to the South Group Three Sectional Semifinals, and Boys Tennis made it to the Central Group Three Sectional Finals. The Girls Track and Field Team captured the Group Three Sectional Championship. So congratulations to all our student athletes and coaches on an outstanding season. Additionally, the committee discussed enhancements for the High School South softball backstop that will be completed this summer. The superintendent shared updates on the Plainsboro housing developments. There are three developments anticipated in Plainsboro in the near future. The Forestale Village Residential has been approved by the township for an additional 394 apartments within and to the west of the existing Forestale Village buildings, and reconfiguration of existing parking. 67 units will be affordable housing. The Princeton Nurseries property is a mixed-use project on a 109-acre parcel north of Forestale Village and west of Route 1. There will be 950 residential units, of which 654 will be non-age-restricted, 96 units will be affordable, and 200 will be age-restricted. The property will be a mix of apartments, townhomes, and single-family homes. And Fusion at Plainsboro will be a mixed-use project located on a 56-acre parcel between Scudder Mill Road and Plainsboro Road, and between the hospital campus and Novo Nordisk. This property will have 525 housing units, which includes 153 townhomes, 372 apartments, 26 of which will be affordable, and 40 supportive housing units, one or more bedrooms in each unit. The committee discussed the recently passed Sunscreen and Sun Protection Bill, which goes into effect for the 2025-26 school year. We await guidance from Strauss Esme on the development of a model policy, and our committee will next meet on July 23.
Thanks, Dana. Does the board have any questions for Administration and Facilities? Nope. Okay, so I'll turn it over now to Louisa to give us a report on Finance.
Committee met, and we first talked about reviewing the agenda items. The committee reviewed the monthly financial reports. The administration affirmed that no major accounts are over-expended and that sufficient funds are available to complete the year. The committee reviewed the following motions on the agenda for approval: to approve a year-end deposit into the Capital Reserve Fund; to approve the designation of a student accident insurance carrier; to approve the third-year membership agreement with the School Alliance Insurance Fund; to approve the third-year membership agreement with NJSIG; to approve tuition rates for the 25-26 school year; to approve lunch rates for the 25-26 school year; to approve the sale of solar renewable energy certificates; to approve purchases exceeding the bid threshold through pricing cooperatives and the NJ State Contract; to approve technology service agreements and renewals; to approve purchases using capital outlay and capital reserve funds for the 25-26 school year; to approve the disposal of obsolete equipment; to approve the renewal of a shared services agreement for transportation maintenance services; to approve quoted in-district summer program transportation routes; to approve staff professional development travel and expenses; and to approve the list of contracts utilized during the current school year. Next, the committee discussed the Second Energy Savings Improvement Program. The district is funding ESIP II through bonds. The district received a AAA rating for the bond sale, reflecting its strong fiscal planning and healthy reserve balances. At Village Elementary School, the old boilers have been removed in preparation for the installation of new ones. The building envelope projects aimed at improving energy efficiency have been completed. Additionally, the first construction meeting for the HAWK HVAC replacement project has been held, with work scheduled to begin on June 30. The contractor has received all necessary materials to complete the project. The district will sell solar energy renewable energy credits generated over the past six months on July 9, 2025. The Monmouth Ocean Educational Services Commission will provide non-public services to students who require them. Under Cafeteria, administration utilized the Paid Lunch Equity Tool to determine the required meal prices for the 25-26 school year, resulting in a 10-cent increase per lunch and a 5-cent increase per breakfast. Despite the adjustment, the district remains below the minimum meal price recommended by the New Jersey Department of Agriculture. In May of 2025, there were two fewer serving days compared to May of '24, which led to a corresponding decrease in the total number of meals served. However, the number of meals served to students qualifying for free reduced or NJ-income-eligible meals remained strong, with a 36% increase, consistent with trends observed in previous months. Breakfast participation at the elementary level continued its upward trend year over year. Notably, 85% of those breakfasts were served to students eligible for free reduced or NJ-income-eligible programs. Southwest Food Service Excellence hosted a Flavor Fest at High School North, where 250 students sampled potential new menu items. Additionally, a roving chef event at Millstone River offered hands-on cooking lessons to 12 elementary students. Staffing continues to be a problem. Unfortunately, two SFE employees submitted their resignations at the beginning of June. Transportation was discussed during Section 1. The committee is next scheduled to meet Tuesday, July 22. And I apologize for being distracted at the beginning, that the minutes say they were for April 17, when they were for June 17.
Perfect. Thank you, Louisa. And does anyone have any questions for Finance? Go ahead, please.
Just had a quick question with regard to the lunch rates that are mentioned. I see a reference to adults here under lunch. Is that adults as in staff, or is it like adult learners? What is that referring to?
Adults as in staff.
Any other questions? Dana?
Since we're asking questions about cafeteria, can someone elaborate on what the Paid Lunch Equity Tool is?
It's kind of like the progressive tool that Flow uses for pricing of insurance. No, sorry.
Good analogy.
Sorry. It's a calculation, it's a calculation that the state gives us once they review all the variables, you know, that they want in the calculation. And it's based on, part of it's based on the October before lunch counts and everything else. Anyway, it's literally a calculation that the state gives us. We punch in all the variables that they ask for, and it gives us the amount that they feel is, I won't say, yeah, essentially the minimum that we should charge. And we can, it also, we can tweak it to move it to where we can get it to where we break even, if we're not breaking even with the minimum number. And then it also essentially caps any increase at 10 cents or 5 cents. So, well, 10 cents, we chose 10 cents for lunch, 5 cents for breakfast.
Lloyd has a question? All right. Chris?
It was mentioned that there was an increase in free reduced lunch to 36%. So at the end of the school year, everyone that is qualified for this past year, do they start, they have to?
30 days into next year.
So everyone has to reapply again 30 days to next year?
Yeah, they have 30 days to get their application. The month of September into like the first week, it's actually maybe closer to 40 days, into October, they have to get.
And will it be included in Genesis as one of the forms that I think is typically right? Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so green analogy, by the way. We can move on to the voting portion of our meeting. Can I get a motion for Administration items, numbers 1 through 8? Plus, I have a couple of verbal corrections to add to bullet number 2, adding in case number 239577, GMS 0519, 2025, as well as on bullet number 5 for Penn Medicine. To correct, it should read to perform student and staff drug screenings. Motion from Dana and Liz. Any questions or comments?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes. Can I get a motion for Curriculum and Instruction Items, numbers 1 through 6? Lloyd and Puja. Questions or comments?
Okay, okay, we'll start with Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes. Can I get a motion for Finance Items, numbers 1 through 48, plus the blue addendum? Louisa and Schwetha, questions or comments?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
And Ms. McEwen.
Yes. And before we move on to Personnel Items, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Adarhold for a quick statement.
Good evening again, everyone. This evening, we actually have two administrative appointments on the agenda, and I just want to recognize both individuals as they're sitting in the audience. First, for GMS, our Assistant Principal, recommendation, Ms. Katie Haley. Katie's right there wearing Jag colors, next to Dr. Daber. And we're real thrilled to welcome Katie to our leadership team. She's been a teacher at Grover Middle School since 2014 in both 6th and 8th grades, Social Studies. But that's just one aspect of all Katie's involvement. She has led and shared numerous committees, including but not limited to the DIAC. She's on our District Evaluation Advisory Committee. She also helps run our new Parent Link Program every summer to welcome our new families. At GMS, she is our Student Council Advisor, our 8th Grade Awards Coordinator, and a representative on our Goal for Equity District Strategic Goal Committee. She's a member, a board member of New Jersey State Association of Middle-Level Educators. She's presented numerous PDs, both in district but also at the state and national levels. She's been recognized as an emerging and distinguished leader at AMLE, which is the American Middle-Level Educators Association. And I believe, and I believe this is accurate, the first GMS teacher to become a GMS Assistant Principal since GMS opened. So congratulations to Katie. And we also have one of our colleagues who's been with us for the better part of, well, almost three decades, Alan Johnson. Alan is on the agenda this evening with a recognition and a title shift, with some responsibility shift. Alan currently is a supervisor of instructional technology, not instructional technology, technology, media, and, God, training. And Alan is being appointed this evening as Assistant Director of Technology. Alan's been an integral member of our district team, but his knowledge of database integration, his knowledge of systems and data analytics is second to none. We're really pleased to welcome Alan to this new role, serving with Peter James as the Director of Technology, serving with Harry Doctor, and serving with Dr. Pearson, who is our new Director of Data Assessment and Accountability. A dynamic team coming together, and Alan is an integral part of that. So Alan, congratulations on the new appointment.
Yes, congratulations to you both. And I, yes, I see the hard work that Ms. Haley does every time I step and visit GMS. So with that, we will officially make it by, can I get a motion for Personal Items, numbers 1 through 4, plus the green addendum? Louisa and Schwetha, any questions or comments?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes. Can I get a motion for, to approve Board of Education Minutes from May 27 and June 10, with a verbal correction amending that John T. Shaw was present on June 10? Lloyd and Dana, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I'm abstaining from the May 27.
Do we have any Board Liaison Reports? Liz or Lloyd?
Liz and I are both the liaison for the PTAs. Liz with West Windsor and myself at the Plainsboro Schools. We just want to thank all the PTAs. As Dr. Adarhold alluded to the beginning, all the end-of-the-year festivities, carnivals, beach days, North just had their senior sunset, and with the weather being uncooperative the past last couple of weeks, I know there was a lot of managing of all these activities. But the amount of work, time, and energy that these volunteers put in is so appreciated, and it makes a special environment and special culture in each of the schools. So on behalf of Liz and myself, we just wanted to thank all the PTAs from all the 10 schools for all the efforts that they've put into making it not only the end of the year a wonderful time for students, but throughout the year, all the wonderful activities that happen and take place. I don't know if Liz wants to add anything else, but thank you.
I was also just going to add that we always need volunteers for all the different roles and committees. It can't be done just by a few that always volunteer, so do encourage you to get involved in the community in different capacities, not just with the PTSAs, but overall.
Here, here. Any other Board Liaison Reports? No? Okay, well, then that takes us to our second opportunity for public comments. The board invites comments from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 15 minutes. Any takers? Seeing none, I'll close this second oppo, oh, never mind, not yet. Hi, right at the podium, and don't forget, you know, name and address. Yeah, go for it.
We'll speak separately, but we stand together.
Okay, so you'll each have three minutes.
That sounds great. So hi, everyone. I know a bunch of you. My name is Kristi. I'm from 2 Suffolk Lane, Princeton Junction. Kidiakopulos is the last name. And basically, I came here to make a comment and also ask for a question. And it's a convoluted one, a little challenging. I know that the answer is more than just, you know, two minutes of our time, but my question is, I live in a track where we go in our neighborhood from HAWK to Millstone to Grover and then south. We're in a really small contingency of people who do that. Our students are amongst 30% that go from HAWK to Millstone. 100% of Dutch Net goes to Village, 100% of Town Center goes to Millstone, 100% of Wykoff goes to Millstone. So this very small group of 30%, then you need to parse those children out a little further. Of those children, the 30%, my, I'm trying to get the answer, that's part of my question. Most of them end up on the community and north tracks. So we're left with this really small group of children. And historically, it has been an issue. It's been a topic of conversation. It has been a challenge for our children who are in our neighborhood, of these small neighborhoods that do this little zigzag. And very much so specific to my family, I have two older children, and they have been through this, and it was a challenge for them. One actually went through, and it really disjointed her relationships, her social-emotional growth. And then when it came time for my second child, we opted for a different route. We went to private school. I'm not saying that's the right answer. He had other reasons why. We also wanted to consider private school, but this is a really disruptive, challenging path, and I'm not quite sure why we still hold on to it. I understand that from years and years ago, there was a reason between the two towns of splitting and reallocating children to create equity and, you know, whatever it was. But I'm not sure, I feel like it's a vestige, it's an appendix of an old divvying up of the two towns, that this very small group of children, the vast majority of those very small group of kids, are really affected by it. So what I'd like to do is understand better the process, why. I would love to have a written response as to exactly how many children do each path, and of course, more specifically, the one that I am a part of. You know, so are we, is it 2% of children of the entire grade that is forced to do this zigzag, really? Because it's not just the 30%, because the 30% of children that go to Millstone, a bunch of them will then be with their peers for forever. So, you know, it doesn't make sense to move them, but why are we on that path? And does it really assist our children's social-emotional growth? And can we look into that? So I'd love to advocate for that question about it.
Thank you.
And speak further.
Thank you. And so Erin Picarello, I also live on Suffolk Lane. My children will follow the same track, just kind of continuing the same points. So I submit an exemption for my daughter, Riley. She is a beautiful, happy, wonderful girl, but she has anxiety, and she has had some troubles, documented troubles in school with her pediatrician. It's something we deal with. We were rejected, so that was concerning. And as I've spent time looking into this more, like Kristi said, it's a very small minority. I think it's actually less than 30% this year. I think it's closer to 25. I know it's less than 50 students, so, who are moving to Millstone River. You know, and I know that the reason they were, you know, the reason that I got on the rejection was that there were too many submitted. So my first question, and this is probably a little bit rhetorical, but how many children is, how many exemptions are too many for you to not care about the children and their well-being? Because I took that personally. And then I think, you know, a couple of additional questions that I have that I'd also like some responses to is, you know, in dealing with the counselors and talking to the counselors, it sounds like children have had issues before. So I'd like to understand, has anybody followed these kids? Do they have, you know, to me, it feels like they're actually having a disadvantaged career progression within their education. So has anybody studied them? Is there a dip in their academics as they're doing this? Are they seeking counseling out at a higher rate than other children in their peer group who are not being split up? Because with, you know, depression, anxiety, other mental and social-emotional disorders on the rise in the youth, I'm really concerned about that for my daughter especially, but for all of the children. I think that this is an unfair thing that they have to go through, that other children don't have to go through. And so out of three of four schools, they all get to stay together with their upper elementary, or their lower elementary cohort into upper elementary. And it really does feel like we're being treated unfairly. I'm also curious if, are there additional children from our little neighborhood, our little community? Are they leaving to go to private school? Are they moving out of the district at a higher rate than other areas? Because it does feel like we're kind of being disproportionately affected, and, you know, our children will be in the minority for both moves, which is not the case for anybody else across the entire West Windsor-Pleinsboro community. It's limited to two neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll close this public comment period. Okay, seeing none, I'll close this public comment period.
Since there's no other public comments, I'll just address the, the two speakers. Comment globally. Sending paths have been in place for a long time in district. Every year, we get well over 300 requests for exemptions to those paths. Exemption requests can be anything from bullying to social, emotional, to, to concerns with transportation with respect to parent work schedules, to questions about proximity. As the speaker stated and accurately, Hawk is the only school that splits going into the upper elementary. And that's cause why West Windsor doesn't fit in West Windsor Elementary Schools. That's been the historical concern when we've talked about the number of students in WWP. West Windsor doesn't fit in West Windsor. So we have cross paths. And those long-established sending paths have been upheld and honored by Assistant Superintendents of Pupil Services and Planning. And in Dr. McDonald's absence, I've filled in in that capacity in the last three months. Globally, I would simply say that when a request comes in, and it's submitted through a Google form, and it goes to all the principals that are involved in the request, as well as registrar and myself, those requests are then solicited for feedback from the building administration, counselors if appropriate, and special services if it impacts an IEP or a placement. And these come in all, all, all times of day and night throughout this season, but throughout the entirety of the summer. Exceptions to the exemption requests are, are the, are rare. They occasionally happen, but the vast majority of requests are denied based on our enrollments, based on our school paths. Now, to the global, the more global issue that was raised, can it be reviewed? And the answer is yes, but through a process. An individual assistant superintendent or superintendent even can't change the sending path that would get recommended to an A and F committee, which is Administration Facilities Committee. And that can be reviewed in, you know, as we, as we look over the summer at our summer agendas, which happened in July and in August. But can't just uniformly change the sending path as we just, the administration upholds the paths that are, that are approved, and then look at extraordinary circumstances for any exemption. Changing a path requires a conversation with the board committee. So I'm sure, knowing our, our committee chair, we'll make sure that this goes into a future board committee topic. And then we can review those paths and have that conversation in July.
All right, thank you, Dr. Adherold. So now it is time for our board member candidate interviews. And I believe we, the number of candidates were put into a randomizer to figure out who's, who's going up first. Do you want to, so give us a little bit of space to kind of, you know, talk through who's staying, who's popping over to the, to the lobby area.
Sure, and I'll hand it over to our board attorney in a moment. But just for the good of the audience, you saw it with the buzzer, with the candidates. Dr. Russo has the ability to set the timer at three minutes. So for the first question, that each individual has the opportunity to make a general statement, talk about their resume, their, their why, you'll have a three-minute window. Chris, it's going to flash at one minute. So you'll, you'll have sort of like a one-minute warning, and then it will buzz at the three-minute mark. With respect to the follow-up questions, Mr. Kachazy, our board attorney, will read the questions. There'll be the same four questions asked to every candidate. So again, in fairness to the candidates, that's where we're going to ask folks to sit outside, so no one has an unfair advantage over hearing the questions in advance. When Mr. Kachazy's done reading the question, Chris will then hit the timer, and the one-minute point will start. Will that beep in advance? It just goes one minute, straight one minute, and then it'll buzz when it's over. Thank you, Chris. Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
That works. I guess at this point, we're going to excuse, do we have, do we have, I have seven candidates. Are they all here? Do we know if they're all here?
I do, I do not know.
No hands?
Maybe, yeah. Looks like it, yeah.
Oh, there, I'm sorry, I didn't see in the back. Okay. So we'll, we'll keep the first candidate in the room, and then the other six can go into the, the lobby, correct?
Right. And actually, Mr. Taro, one of our colleagues is going to join you out there in case there's any questions, and just to make sure someone's out there with everyone.
Okay. The, the first candidate is Hanif Payek. So before you begin, please, feel free to go up here, if everyone else can just leave the room.
Can you tell us who's on deck, just so they have a sense of when they're going?
Do you want me to give the order?
The order, I think, I think they'd appreciate that.
That's fine. Next will be, I apologize for my eyes. I gotta, I gotta, I need bigger font. Deborah Vivona will be next. Akshay Upadhyya, Paul O'Brien, then Jerry Macon, then Jayadi Venakantraman, Kashbu Mahandru was last, okay? I apologize if I butchered anybody's name. Mr. Payek, am I saying your name correctly?
Yep.
Thank you. I think everybody's out of the room. So as Dr. Adherold had stated, you'll be able to give an opening statement. You'll have three minutes for the opening statement. Dr. Russo will be timing. You'll get a one-minute warning for that. So it's up to three minutes. You don't have to use the entire three minutes, but if you would, the board wants, the board wants to thank you for submitting your application to serve in the Board of Education. They learned a little more about you. So you have these three minutes as to why you're running for the board. You can elaborate on your, your submitted letter, your qualifications, or any areas of priority. So the floor is yours for your opening statement.
Good evening. My name is Hanif Payek. First of all, I would like to thank all the board members, Dr. Adherold, and all the WWP admin staff who provided me opportunity to speak with you tonight. My family and I proudly called Plainsboro home over the last 10 years. We moved, when our older, like eldest daughter, like ready to go to the school, we moved to Plainsboro. We chose because of the academic performance of the school district. Today, one of my daughter goes to the High School South, the second one goes to the Millstone River. Both have benefit from the WWP's diverse academic programs, vibrant school life, and a, there is strong support for the athletics. As a, like I'm a dad of the student who plays a lot of sports, my daughter. I've seen firsthand how the balancing the academics, her extracurriculars and social growth, and this kind of like essential to education, like as a well-rounded child. Over the years, I have involved in various activities in the schools and communities. I participate in various PTA events, local town events, a, a building, a, like, you know, events for the community where you unite our town. I'll be also serving in, as a treasurer in a MRIS PTA for next year. I remain committed to like any initiative that helps students and our schools. Professionally, I bring over 23 years of experience in cybersecurity. I worked for Fortune 500 companies, universities, government agencies, to secure their critical infrastructure. In my day-to-day, like, work, what I do is like I combat the cyber threats, manage the project budgets, solve the complex technical issues. That technically provide me a experience that will help, you know, support the students' data, keep our schools secure and efficient. Like, you know, we are living in the AI-driven world right now. It has its advantage, and then there are a lot of complexity coming with it. I want to help the district responsibly, like, you know, harness the technology to enhance the learning and use it for the positive way, the AI. Last year, I ran for a Board of Education. I knocked almost 3,000 doors in Plainsboro. I spoke to like almost hundreds of families and past students, and they, they, I heard their concerns, like, you know, they, they also have their, share their hopes, their dreams with the district. That experience, like, you know, continues to guide me today. And I believe that leadership that puts the students and educators first remain that, like, you know, in every step of the step. I'm not a politician. I'm a parent, neighbor, and a problem solver. I care deeply about the academic excellence, mental health, student well-being, and supporting of our educators.
Thank you, Hanif. Those three minutes. So I, we have more questions, though.
Sure.
So as previously stated, we're going to have four questions for you each. You can give them a minute of response. Again, Dr. Russo will be timing the responses. The first question is, what particular experience or skills prepare you to serve as a board member?
So one thing I say is that, like, I'm being, like, I'm a, I'm very good with the budgets. I serve in a very, like, various places as a treasurer. I, like, you used, like, I used to serve in a various board and provide the stuff. And I personally use for my particular business, right? So where I have to provide quarterly and yearly budgets, and that kind of, like, you know, skills, provide, like, you know, it will help me the good age of to serve in a board. I'm also a very good at the technology, 23 years in cybersecurity, so I'll definitely help on that also to serve this position.
Thank you. The second question is, is there a specific issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
I don't have any specific issues. The board does a tremendous job. Like, one thing I want to say about board, like, you know, last year when I did my campaign, I walked over those houses. I met a lot of, like, past students, and they mentioned to me that, you know, when we went to college, we were so well-prepared by the district. The base created by the district was so good. So that definitely helped. So district did a really good job with that. One thing I would suggest, district can do something better on it, probably, like, you know, our district has a lot of immigrant parents, their first time coming to US. They, we have a lot of good programs and policies. They probably don't know, not aware of it. If we can provide some education, some webinars and stuff like that, that would be great. Other than that, I don't have any concern.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, the New Jersey School Boards Association emphasizes that a board member role is not to administer at the schools, but to ensure that they are well-run through policy and planning. How do you interpret this distinction, and how would you apply it in your actions as a board member?
So I understand how the board works. So technically, if I interpret as enterprise, he, kind of a CEO of the company, and we are kind of a board who, who works with the policies and stuff, but CEO or admin has to improve, like, put that policy in a place to the right. So I understand the, the responsibility of board and, and the admin.
And your last question is, what are the top two or three strengths of our school district, and what are the most significant challenges you believe it currently faces? How would you propose the board address these challenges in the next three to five years?
One challenge I see is that earlier, she mentioned probably that there are new houses coming in our, our community, right? Roughly 3,500 houses, Plainsboro has 1,100, and West Windsor has 2,400 houses coming in there. So that will be a challenge for district to accommodate all these students, right? What we're doing good is that, like, one of the things I would mention is that, like, in this year, 2025, we got a 10 educator, like, best educator award, which is kind of shows the stability of our educators, what we have it here. And I guess, yeah, and the other thing I just mentioned earlier that, you know, the students say that they are well-prepared, the base is created properly, and, you know, what I, what I would say is that every student come back to the parents in 10 years after that, and come and say, thank you for coming to, like, putting me in WWP. It made me like, you know, well-prepared for the life.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same.
That concludes, so you're welcome to take a seat and stay if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Payek. All right, now we can bring--
Next candidate, please. I'm sorry, it was Deborah Vivona.
Good evening.
Hi, Deborah. So over here. This is a good trick, right?
That was a good trick.
So just to kind of reiterate what Dr. Adherold had said earlier, you're going to have three minutes to give an opening statement. Dr. Russo will be timing you. I believe there'll be a one-minute warning?
I'll probably be sure.
Okay, so you have a one-minute warning, so you know we have one minute left. After that, there will be four questions with one minute each time to respond. So from the board, I'd just say thank you for submitting your application to serve on the Board of Education. The board would like to learn more about you. In three minutes, in a three-minute statement, please introduce yourself and tell the board why you are running for the school board. You can elaborate, elaborate on your submitted letter, qualifications, and areas of priority. Floor is yours.
Great. The mic is on?
Yep.
So good evening. My name is Debbie Vivona. I've lived in Plainsboro for 31 years, and I have been a parent of a West Windsor Plainsboro student for 24 years. My last child, I have five children, is a sophomore, almost a junior, two more days. So that's a little bit about my time here in Plainsboro. I'm, by education, I'm a teacher. I've taught in the classroom for over 10 years. Started teaching in Michigan, then Illinois, then I did Peace Corps, so I was in Cameroon, and then I came to New Jersey. When my third child was born, I moved out of the classroom and started a home daycare business. I did that for about 14 years. When my last child was in third grade, I took over our family business's bookkeeping. So I have experience with payroll, insurance, transportation, all those kind of similar but different things that we do here on, with your budget. So I continue doing that. I also do volunteer work in the community. I've been a scout leader for 23 years. I currently run a girl-boy scout troop in Plainsboro. I have to go home and pack. I'm taking 18 kids for a week of summer camp on Sunday. That is my favorite thing to do, is give youth new experiences. That's my connection, I think, with the board, to bring that firsthand connection with the kids. Besides that, we raise three dogs for the CNI. The CNI is a guide school for the blind, so they do the professional training of the guide dogs. Firsthand, I've read about is what small accommodations and, and accessibility does to someone's life, more so than reading about it, being able to see that happen. Besides that, I'm on my homeowners association, I'm vice president. I've had a lot of opportunity to collaborate with neighbors and collaborate with other board members and work on that decision-making as a group. I've also worked with the Plainsboro Rescue Squad. After COVID, they had low enrollment. The chief approached me, we were friends through scouting, and asked me to come board and get adults to volunteer from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM to sleep in the squad house and do about 100 hours of classroom training to get trained. We were very successful. We were able to fill the gap, and now we're just kind of at a maintenance level where we bring in adults every year. So I'm not really, is that three minutes? Wow, I did three minutes.
All right.
Questions?
So now, sorry. All right, sorry about that. So now we have four questions, like we said before. You have a minute each to respond. So now we have four questions, like we said before, you have a minute each to respond for each question. The first question is, what particular experience or skills prepare you to serve as a board member?
When I think of my skills, first, I would say organizational skills. I'm able to do all of these things, plus work. Work is mostly part-time, but because I'm organized. Kind of ran the family. My dad is retired Navy, so I grew up in a Navy household. Schedules, duty rosters are kind of my thing, so I arrive places early, or what my dad would call on time. And that would be the first thing, my teaching experience, my continued work with kids, my continued work in the, in the community. Now is a good time. I'm down to one kid who should be getting her driver's license next year. I actually have a few minutes of extra time. I would imagine, I don't know, 10 to 15 hours a month between board meetings, researching topics, kind of, you know, doing what I need to do to catch up. So it's a good time for me.
The next question is, is there a specific issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
No. I think putting five kids through the district, living here as long as we have, it's kind of a payback, paid forward. You guys have taken care of my kids. I have kids in STEM, I have kids in the trades, I have kids who went to fancy schools, I have a kid who went to, you know, public college. So I've seen the gamut in my own house. We have a very changing community, which I'm aware of. I don't know if anybody knows what the right formula is, but I'm here to learn and listen and make the best decision we can.
Next question is, the New Jersey School Boards Association emphasize, emphasizes that a board member's role is not to administer the schools, but to ensure they are well-run through policy and planning. How do you interpret this distinction and how do you apply it in your actions as a board member?
So I think it goes back to keeping those committees on schedule, accountability, follow-up, kind of things that are something that I do naturally. Like you said, we're not here to make the decisions, but just make sure we're efficient and support the superintendent and support the teachers and the buildings and everyone else.
Okay, and the last question, there's a sub-part, I'm going to warn you. What are the top two or three strengths of our school district and what are the most significant challenges you believe it currently faces? How would you propose the board address these challenges in the next three to five years?
So strengths, we just heard how well our athletic clubs are doing. We know that our academics are top-notch. So I think the diversity. I know I have a kid who's in ceramics class now, so we are, we offer a lot. We have wonderful musical programs, so that breadth. What challenges? There's that cell phone policy coming down, mental health. You know, the mental health issue has affected my own family, my own kids. I think, how are we going to take care of AI coming in, using it as a tool? Maybe education's going to change a lot, because we'll be able to implement ways to have individualized plans for every kid. I think a lot of change will be coming. How we address it will be, but I'm not sure if I answered it exactly, but we do a lot of the stuff that's good. And I ran out of time.
It's perfect timing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to stay and next, the next...
I'll go back with my friend.
Is...
Akshay?
How are my eyes really going? Akshay.
Upadhyay?
Oh, I'm sorry. Akshay. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Upadhyay?
Upadhyay.
That was pretty close, though, right? Sorry.
Sorry.
As we, Dr. Adenhold had said earlier, you're going to have the opportunity to make a three-minute statement. Dr. Russo will be timing you. You will get a one-minute warning for a conclusion of your statement. After that, we'll be asked a series of four questions. You have a minute each to respond to those, each question. With that said, the board thanks you for submitting your application to serve on the Board of Education. The board would like to hear more about, about you. In the three-minute statement, please introduce yourself and tell the board why you are running for the school board. You can elaborate on your submitted letter qualification and any areas of priority. Time's yours.
All right. All right. Hello, my name is Akshay Upadhyay, and I am running for the board because I want to address one concern I see is that the overuse of technology in lower elementary. I'm the parent of a second grader, and it seems all they do is use the, their Chromebooks or they're watching videos. Last year, they were watching videos on how to do addition. It's, what is the point of the teacher if they're just watching videos? And I think with all this screen time, they're not learning how to, one, focus on the teacher, learn from the teacher, and, two, they're not spending time with their friends. So I went to Middlesex County, or Middlesex, yeah, Middlesex County Public Schools 30 years ago. I started in second grade, and we didn't have all of this. And I still am technology literate. I did electrical engineering, and I think this emphasis on technology is a great disservice to the students. And there is so much bullying that's going on in lower elementary. I've spoken to the building administration, I've talked to Dr. McDonald about this, and I think the students are not having enough time to spend with each other. So on the playground, it's just, it's essentially a jungle. And it seems there is a counselor in the school, but the teachers are no longer handling the problems like they used to even 20 years ago. And I want to fix this. I want to get this technology out. I want the kids to go back to the basics, learn how to form their letters, learn how to form their numbers, learn how to be kids again, not just staring at a screen all day. And I feel the education I got, so I graduated 22, 23 years ago from Middlesex High School. I went to college and I was ready for the world, and I'm not sure that this education now is going to prepare the kids for the same type of success that I've had. That's it.
Thank you. Like I said before, we're now going to ask you four questions. You have a minute each for your response. First question is, what particular experience or skills prepare you to serve as a board member?
So, one, I have been through the public school system in Middlesex County, and I'm the parent of a student going through it, and I see problems. So I think that's all the qualification I feel is needed.
All right, next question. Is there a specific issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
Yes, so like in the opening statement, the overuse of technology and I think the bullying that's happening. So if I had to pick one, I would say the overuse of technology is causing all these issues, or at least some of these issues, and they could be addressed if we just went back to the old ways.
Third question. The New Jersey School Boards Association emphasizes that a board member's role is not to administer the schools, but to ensure that they are well-run through policy and planning. How do you interpret this distinction and how do you apply it in your actions as a board member?
So I think it goes back to keeping those committees on schedule, accountability, follow-up, kind of things that are something that I do naturally. Like you said, we're not here to make the decisions, but just make sure we're efficient and support the superintendent and support the teachers and the buildings and everyone else.
Okay, and the last question, there's a sub-part, I'm going to warn you. What are the top two or three strengths of our school district and what are the most significant challenges you believe it currently faces? How would you propose the board address these challenges in the next three to five years?
So, in my first job out of college, we, there was a, like, a separation called vision, strategy, execution. So the board is responsible for the vision, the superintendent is responsible for the strategy, and the assistant superintendents and the teachers are responsible for execution. So I think the board's policy should be that let's figure out how to ensure our children are successful, and then we can work with the schools to figure out how to implement that policy. So my view is, let's have the teachers go back to teaching, let's have them teach proper behavior, let's have them teach penmanship, and then we can work with the administration to figure out how to best implement that.
Last question. What are the top two or three strengths of our school district and what are the most significant challenges you believe it currently faces? How would you propose the board address these challenges in the next three to five years?
So I think the biggest strength the school district has is money. I see how much we spend per student, and compared to even where I grew up, it's significantly more. And yet I feel with, I think this money is not being spent where it's needed, especially in the early childhood education. So I would say, let's eliminate the technology and let's bring in more teachers. And if we need more counselors to help kids learn better behavior, then let's use the savings and pay for more counselors. One counselor for 300 students is not sufficient. So we need to empower the teachers and we need more counselors.
That concludes the questions. Thank you very much. You're welcome to sit in the audience or whatever you'd like.
Thank you. I said, thank you. Paul?
Paul. Hello. Mr. O'Brien, just to reiterate what Dr. Adenhold had said earlier, you're going to have three minutes to make an opening statement. That'll be timed by Dr. Russo. You'll get a one-minute warning, which I believe is up on the podium there. After that, you'll be asked four questions. You have a minute to respond to each question. With that said, the board would like to thank you for submitting your application to serve on the Board of Education. The board would like to learn more about you. So in these three minutes, please introduce yourself and tell us, tell the board why you are running for the school board, and you, feel free to elaborate on your submitted letter qualifications and the areas of priority. Time's yours.
Great, thank you. Is the mic on? Yep, thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to elaborate on my letter of interest. As a longtime resident of Plainsboro and a parent of a child in the district, my interest in serving stems from a heartfelt commitment to our schools. My experience, particularly in supporting individuals who may not always have a strong voice, has instilled in me a profound importance of listening, demonstrating compassion, and truly meeting people where they are. This commitment to meaningful community engagement is evident by my service as president of the Northern Knights Marching Band Boosters and as a founding member of the Plainsboro Business Partnership and as a DJ at various Girl Scout dances. I'm here with a sincere desire to serve, to contribute collaboratively without a specific agenda, and to ensure our schools are well-supported. My work history has helped me develop skills necessary for this role that has involved navigating complex regulatory landscapes and collaborating with expert third-party consultants and diverse stakeholders, a skill set directly applicable to being a board member. Furthermore, my experience in coordinating large-scale renovation projects demonstrates a proven ability to manage extensive undertakings, oversee budgets, facilitate seamless communication among all parties involved, which is critical for the effective oversight of district operations. Across my career, I've consistently demonstrated strong leadership, strategic planning, the ability to foster highly collaborative environments. Understanding the vital role of the board, I commit to upholding the principles of thoughtful governance, educational excellence, and inclusive decision-making. As outlined in the School Ethics Act, the board's responsibility is to focus on policymaking, planning, and appraisal, ensuring the schools are well-run, rather than micromanaging daily operations. My contribution would be centered on leveraging my expertise in planning, financial oversight, community relations, support, to support the superintendent and the administration. I aim to contribute to sound, long-term planning, responsible resource allocation, foster strong, transparent relationships between the school and the diverse community it serves. I'm confident that my unique blend of experiences, skills, and unwavering commitment to community service makes me an ideal candidate. Thank you.
Like I said earlier, now, we're not going to ask you four questions, and you have a minute to respond to each question. The first question is, what particular experience or skills prepare you to serve as a board member?
So I've covered a bit of that, but I have a diverse work history, working with individuals with developmental disabilities, brain injuries, various other ailments that have afforded me a sensitivity to folks who may not have a voice. Also, as a consultant in the senior housing space, I'm able to interact with a broad base of individuals from various backgrounds, socioeconomic, educational, so forth. I'm a good communicator, and I connect with people.
Next question is, is there a specific issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
You know, if you ask one of the more popular WhatsApp groups, it'd be to polish Adderhold shoes. But that's, that's not the point. The point of the board member is to make sure that the schools are well-run.
Next question. The New Jersey School Boards Association emphasizes that a board member's role is not to administer the schools, but to ensure that they are well-run through policy and planning. How do you interpret this distinction and how would you apply it in your actions as a board member?
Yeah, it's not what I, as an individual, am looking to accomplish, it's what support we can offer the district in vetting contracts, evaluating the superintendent, and really managing what is coming to us. It's, it's not that we are out there looking for things to accomplish.
And final question. What are the top two or three strengths of our school district and what are the most significant challenges you believe it currently faces? How would you propose the board address these challenges in the next three to five years?
The top two strengths, wow. Managing growth, I think, right now it's a challenge, but I do think that we've done an awful good job of managing the growth. We heard earlier that West Windsor, you know, has outgrown its belt for, for the schools Hearing all about the growth happening in Plainsboro presents another challenge. I'm not sure of what the distribution of one, two bedrooms, I heard there might be some single families. I don't know what that impact is to the school district and what challenges that faces our capacity to serve this new group of people coming in. The second strength of the district, I would say, has to be its basketball team this year. What a fantastic time we had, watching them go on their run.
That concludes the questions. Thank you. You're welcome to stay if you'd like.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
The next applicant is Jerry. Jerry.
Oh, hello, sorry.
I'm Oz.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm the wizard, yep.
When I was in basic training, I got lost in navigation, my apologies.
So before we begin, I do have one ask of you. If you could just provide the board, because I don't... If you could just provide the board, because I don't think we have it with your address.
Oh, 3703 Quail Ridge Drive, Plainsboro, New Jersey, 08536.
Thank you. As Dr. Hatterhold had stated earlier, you'll have three minutes to provide a statement to the board. Dr. Russo will be timing you. Those three minutes, you'll get a one-minute warning, which will be on the podium. After that, you'll have four questions that will be asked of you. You'll have a minute to respond to each question. With that said, the board thanks you for submitting your application to serve on the Board of Education. They'd like to learn more about you. In your three-minute statement, please introduce yourself and tell the board why you're running for the school board. You can elaborate on your submitted letter qualifications and areas of priority.
Thank you, sir. My name is Jerry Makin. I'm running for the school board because not only do I love my own children, I love other people's children. Because I know collectively, they'll be our future, and the greatest investment we can ever do is model to them the respect they're not only putting on their culture's name, but their family's name, and anyone who's ever invested and attempted to love them and persevere into greatness. It won't be easy, but I want to model what it's going to take to be truly successful, truly diverse, while maintaining your individual integrity. It starts there, then it goes to family, then it goes to the greater nation. And we can always learn and benefit from one another. So I try to model that. My background is, I'm an older guy, have a BSW in social work. Thanks to my time in the military, I'm first-generation, college graduate with my family. My family dynamic was strained, but it was very valuable. And that's why I always teach respect to parents and those who invest in you. Huge in mentoring, started a organization called Makin Mentor Academy. It's a nonprofit that really encourages mentorship, leadership, et cetera. I currently teach, I'm a K-12 educator, New Jersey. I have contract teaching assignment, but I finally decided, you know what, it's time for me to get back to full-time teaching, and accepted a position at Eden Autism, where I get to work with the population and enjoy their successes on their level and share those successes with their parents. I usually work middle school. I work with quote-unquote "at-risk youth." But actually, in my 33 years of experience, 16 as an educator, I worked with all types, all backgrounds, and this gave me both a macro and a micro-level approach to everything and to everyone. And it's given me tough skin, it's given me balance, it's given me fairness, it's given me grace. It's taught me, I learned from any and everybody, from a baby to someone who's about to take their last breath on earth. I find everyone valuable. I've learned to maneuver and grow as a person. So basically, not to waste anyone's time, prior military, educator, social services background, a lover of people, ecclesiastically endorsed, but no particular disrespect to anyone's religion, because that's what the chaplaincy training in the military taught me, respect everyone's religion, respect everyone's background, and find the commonality of basic respect. I like to close my three minutes with an email from a former student to try to, you know, bring it all together, who I am as a person. Have I had my one-minute warning yet? Basically, I sent you a message a while ago. "I'm a senior this year with a 4.3 average. A big reason is the chunk strategy you taught and the leadership courses that you provided, helping me to navigate the difficulties with students and incorporate everyone in my leadership style."
Thank you. Now, like I said earlier, I'm going to ask you a series of questions, four questions. The first one is, what particular experience or skills prepare you to serve as a board member?
Collectively, everything from the aforementioned. I've had a chance to work with diverse populations, socioeconomic statuses. And the bottom line is, when you have the courage and the leadership style that's inclusive, you also can pull people together. Everyone has to be disciplined, everyone has to grow. But people learn and grow in different styles, different settings, different circumstances. If you can be a great communicator, i.e. mainly by listening, mainly by not disregarding immediately, but seeking to understand, even if they're barking up the quote-unquote "wrong tree," sometimes it's just a shift in dynamic, dynamic and perspective can take you from the wrong tree to the right tree. Or treat us better for society in general, will take that same energy, that same effort that might be misplaced, put it in its proper place, can help everyone elevate. But you can't do that if you're going to be quickly dismissive, and you won't go through the entire steps, the complete steps of a process to help people grow and develop. People will fire themselves, but at least give them a chance to.
Thank you. Next question. Is there a specific issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
Yes. We have to understand that we're modeling for our students, and love without discipline is really not going to help a student grow. And discipline doesn't mean violence, or poorly speaking of a, of a young person. It just simply means to tap them on the shoulder, provide the training necessary to make them question or rethink the way that they're thinking, their, their current set of values, and use their resources and their own intellectual prowess to study and come back amongst other concerned mentors, mentees, educators, parents, teachers, to help them just expand the way they currently see things. That redirection, that discipleship, that mentorship will help us elevate our students and not waste the talent, not waste who they are, because they are growing up. They're going to make mistakes. But how do we safely, or as safe as possible, grow them into the adults that they need to be, no matter how it appears? Look past the appearance, look at the heart, and see if it's salvageable.
Thank you. The third question is, the New Jersey School Boards Association emphasizes that a board member's role is not to administer the schools, but to ensure that they are well-run through policy and planning. How do you interpret this distinction, and how do you apply it in your actions as a board member?
Accountability. I think an excellent board will just simply hold all the stakeholders accountable. I think that accountability can be done with respect, even with a touch of admiration, but the standard must be set, the standard must be upheld. Again, there will be moments of training, there will be confusion, sometimes even, I won't even say the word "fight," but disagreements. That mature adults or leaderships amongst the board can help push past that, so we can still hold the accountability and keep pushing forward, because that's where the standard of excellence really is. If we're on this board, we too have to be willing to be accountable. And if we're on this board, we have to execute the accountability in the most respectful and graceful way possible.
And the final question. What are the top two or three strengths of our school district? And what are the most significant challenges you believe it currently faces? How would you propose the board address these challenges in the next three to five years?
Well, our school district is awesome. I think its reputation in the state and beyond is pretty much impeccable when it comes to academics, success, college achievement. Nothing should ever change about that. We hold an excellent standard. We're excellent models. Also like the dedication of the teachers and the staff, the coaches, the volunteers, the parents, the community. It's the most together community of progressive thinkers and learners that we have. So those things, those two, those two items are clear and distinct, but we need to take a look at the underbelly, or the underside, or the things that are not so cute, or not so savory sides, that part we want to hide. And sometimes, in our community, it could be a misunderstanding and a misrepresentation of a population groups that you're really not that familiar with. And appointing leaders from those communities, understanding hurts and traumas, and we all have them in one way or another. Trauma escapes no one, but trying to work through that to our best of our abilities.
Thank you. That concludes the questions. Thank you for your time. You're more than welcome to stay if you'd like.
Thank you.
Sit over there? Sure.
Jyoti's next.
What's that?
Jyoti.
Jyoti, yeah, this is too small for me. I have to go to this page, because I can see, I know.
Jyoti?
Jyoti. As Dr. Hatterhold knows, my, my glasses are in my bag. I only have one left. Hi. Oh, over here. Ms. Venkatrahman, hopefully I pronounced that correctly. Close enough? I tried. As Dr. Hatterhold had stated earlier, you will have three minutes to provide an opening statement. Dr. Russo will be timing you. There is an indicator on the podium that will indicate when you have a minute left. And then after that, you will have a series of four questions. You have a minute to answer each question. With that said, the board would like to thank you for submitting your application to serve on the Board of Education. The board would like to learn more about you. In the three-minute statement, please introduce yourself and tell the board why you're running for the school board. You can elaborate on your submitted letter qualifications and any areas of priority. Thank you.
Sounds good. Hello, okay. Thank you, and good evening, members of the school board and the school administration. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I'm Jyoti Venkatrahman. I'm a resident of Plainsboro. I'm a first-generation immigrant who calls this beautiful state and country my home. My professional career has been in the nonprofit sector, where I'm passionate about social justice and health equity. I hold an MPA from the School of Public Service NYU, a postgraduate degree in health management, and an undergraduate degree in microbiology. A career in nonprofit career and expertise in multiple social justice issues has equipped me with a wide range of skills. And here are some ways how I see that adding value to this space. Expertise in understanding systemic inequities, root cause barriers, and ensuring policy solutions address and eliminate them. I see this helping and guiding the district's vision in ensuring every child has an equal opportunity to succeed regardless of their background. Deep understanding of explicit and implicit bias that affects decision-making, which can guide the advancement of fair and equitable practices. Expertise in interacting with diverse underserved communities, which I see as skills that can help guide the engagement with parents, teachers, students, diverse groups, hear their concerns, and build support for school initiatives. A familiarity with policy and governance, which requires skills like data-driven decision-making, understanding of governance structures, diverse stakeholder engagement. I see these skills broadly supporting the role boards play, laid out by the state laws and by your own governing laws. While I have found a profound meaning in public service through my professional roles, I've also been involved locally in our community by volunteering in PTA boards, board roles, formal board roles like secretary for Millstone River School and CMS PTA say boards, volunteering for book fairs, PTA events, and I'm also the girl scout cookie manager for my troop. So I see this opportunity to serve here as a school, in the school board, as a continuation of my commitment to do public service more locally. In terms of priorities, what really resonates for me is ensuring that we maintain a rigorous academic programming with a holistic infusion of SEL skills and a dedication to equity. So those would be my priority areas. In conclusion, thank you for the opportunity to speak, wishing my fellow candidates good luck, and wishing the board members the very best in your decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, like I said earlier, we're going to ask you four questions. You'll have a minute to respond to each. First question is, what particular experience or skills prepare you to serve as a board member?
So I've worked on a wide range of social justice issues and in the nonprofit sector per se, so I'm very familiar with boards, different types of boards, governing boards. Working in the social justice issue, I bring a lot of intersectional lens in understanding how things converge and how inequities kind of show up. As I mentioned, I have skills in understanding root cause issues, understanding of bias and how that informs decision-making, expertise in interacting with diverse communities. I also do a lot of data-driven decision-making, a lot of policy analysis, stakeholder engagement, holding institutions accountable. I am on the JAGNA Council for the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation New Jersey Department, so that's like a community advisory board, kind of ensuring the New Jersey Department's programmatic areas are, you know, focused on equity. So that's another expertise I have. Sorry.
Okay, next question. Is there a specific issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
I think what motivates me is just my commitment to public service. My professional career is pretty much dedicated to public service more than the nonprofit sector. I'm passionate about ensuring, no matter your zip code across the state, you have access to clean air, clean water. So that's my professional career. What motivates me to serve here is a continuation of doing that public service role more locally, serving our communities. I've already been doing that as part of the PTA and Girl Scout and volunteering. So this was just me taking a leap of faith and trying to bring the public service work that I'm doing more at a state level to more at, for our own community, a community that I call home.
Okay, next question. The New Jersey School Board Association emphasizes that a board member's role is not to administer the schools, but to ensure that they are well-run through policy and planning. How do you interpret this distinction, and how would you apply it in your actions as a board member?
So as I mentioned, because of the work I do, I'm very familiar with how distinct board roles can be and what boards are governed by. I know you have statutes, state laws, that regulate what exactly boards can and cannot do. There is strong code of ethics, so you have to know how to hold those code of ethics, be familiar with conflict of interest. So I'm already coming with some, what I would say, of understanding of the board governing structures, et cetera. So I see that as all positive skill sets that can help me kind of serve in this role. I have been part of state task forces, which is a different type of role, but that was part of my professional work where I was representing. And again, that was governed by rules. So I'm kind of familiar. Nonprofit world, we deal with a lot of boards, governing boards. It's pretty much over there, so I, sometimes I think I live and breathe board roles.
Okay, last question. What are the top two or three strengths of our school district? And what are the most significant challenges you believe it currently faces? How would you propose the board address these challenges in the next three to five years?
So top two things, two, three things that I think the district does really well. I have really appreciated this philosophy of whole child, every child, global child. To me, that is really encompassing this holistic approach, so it's not just your academic grades, it's also social emotional learning. My former work and my current work roles, I know the vital importance of that. I think the district's doing really good in that. By infusing SEL skills, I've seen at elementary grade worksheets that I have to sign, where they have to reflect on, how did you understand how you did as learning it? So I thought that's great. The programming that's being offered for parents, I lean on some of those resources to reinforce SEL skills back home. So I think that's really great. I think the rigorous academic programming and the variety of opportunities and options to me is really a standout. In fact, that's one of the reasons why I chose to be here and have my kids go through the schooling system. I don't think I answered that question.
Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Only one left, right? Hi.
Hi.
It's amazing, it really is. Listen, you can keep looking at him, that's fine. I know how to throw my voice. I could be, I should be a ventriloquist. Sorry, so Ms. Mahandru. As Dr. Hatterhold stated earlier, you'll have three minutes to give an opening statement. Dr. Russo will be timing you. For those three minutes, there's an indicator on the podium that will alert you when you have one minute left. After your, your statement, you'll be asked four questions. You have a minute to respond to each of those questions. Okay, so the time is yours.
Thank you. I don't know if my statement is three minutes, but we'll, okay, thank you. Good evening, board. My name is Khushbu Mihandru, and I'm a proud, longtime resident of Plainsboro Township. I work full-time for a medical device company, which is also headquartered right here in Plainsboro. I've been involved in the community and had had the privilege of serving as a PTA president at Town Center Elementary when my son was in kindergarten. I'm here today to express my interest in serving on the, our school board. I want to acknowledge the remarkable work already being done within our school district. Our academic achievements are a testament to the dedication and talent of our educators. environment for our students. My recent experience chaperoning the sixth-grade outdoor ed school trip further strengthened my admiration for our teachers. Spending that focused time with them outside the traditional classroom setting allowed me to witness firsthand their incredible commitment, patience, and genuine connection they forge with our students. It was truly inspiring to see their passion in action, managing the logistics of a large group while still ensuring every student felt engaged and cared for. We are incredibly privileged to live in such a diverse community, and this diversity is one of our greatest strengths. The varied backgrounds, cultures, and life experiences that our families bring enrich our schools in countless ways, offering unique perspectives and broadening the horizon for our students. I'm here today, present and willing, to contribute my time, energy, and commitment to our district. I believe my perspective, coupled with my genuine desire to support our schools, would be a valuable asset to the board. I'm eager to collaborate with all of you to continue building upon our successes and ensure every student in our district has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
All right. Now, like I said before, I'm going to ask you four questions. You have a minute to respond to each. First question, what particular experience or skills prepare you to serve as a board member?
I can walk you through my educational background. I went to school in India, high school, graduated in India in 2002. I went to design school after that and college. During the pandemic, I decided to switch careers. I am in import-export right now. I'm a licensed customs broker with CBP, Customs and Border Protection. And my current job is data management, being accuracy, data accuracy, import-export, regulation reviews, making sure we are compliant. So I have a compliance background in this current career that I have.
Okay, next question. Is there a specific issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
To be a part of this community. I've seen my kids grow in this district, and who wouldn't want to be a part of this community? And I think that's the reason why I'm here, to be more connected and to see how I can serve.
Thank you. Next question. The New Jersey School Board Association emphasizes that a board member's role is not to administer the schools, but to ensure that they are well-run through policy and planning. How do you interpret this distinction and how would you apply it in your actions as a board member?
I would say the school does an extremely well administrative job with our kids, running the district, with our teachers, and whatever that comes with. As a board member, I'm here to follow or lead by example of what is already being done. We are already doing great things, and I am just here to support the board in all the initiatives that they've already started with.
Thank you. Last question. What are the top two or three strengths of our school district and one of the most significant challenges you believe it currently faces? How would you propose the board address these challenges in the next three to five years?
Oh, I don't know much about the challenges, but I have to say that my students are happy. They enjoy their classrooms, their teachers are very, very well-connected to them. I receive feedback, good or bad, whenever there's something going on, both, from both sides, from the teachers and the students. And I like the open communication that the teachers have with the parents and how they connect.
Thank you. You're welcome to take a seat.
Yeah, thank you.
That concludes the interviews.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, for asking all the questions, and I'm glad everyone finally figured out where you're sitting. Wow, we had a really great group of candidates. This is going to be a very difficult decision, so I want to thank each and every one of you for your time and your willingness to serve and give back to our community. And now I have to read the statement so we can recess into closed executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act authorizes boards of education to meet an executive session under certain circumstances, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act requires the board to adopt a resolution at a public meeting to go into private session, now therefore be it resolved by the Westminster Plainsboro Regional School District Board of Education that it is necessary to meet an executive session to discuss certain items involving the Board of Education vacancy. Be it further resolved at any discussion held by the board, which need not remain confidential, will be made public as soon as feasible. The minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Be it further resolved that the board will return to open session to conduct business at the conclusion of the executive session. So we will be back. And now I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn to the closed executive session. Pooja and Loy, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again. And so feel free to, I guess, hang on here and wait, or alternatively, if you do need to leave, you know, this will be livestreamed. All right? All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to return to public session? Pooja and Loy, all in favor, say aye or yes.
Aye.
Aye? All right. So I know you've been patiently waiting. Thank you for your patience. Now can I get a motion to approve Paul O'Brien to fill the vacant Plainsboro Board of Education position through December 2025? Louisa and Shweta? Roll call, please.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Jennyara.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Boncel.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes. And I just want to thank every single one of the candidates. This was a really difficult decision. You all came forth with great answers to the question and very interesting backgrounds and experiences. And I think what we really appreciated was your selfless desire to give back to our community. So I just want to remind everyone, too, that, you know, this November, there is another cycle, another election, and the deadline to fill your petition is July 28th. So that is coming up very quickly. So I do encourage everyone to participate in the democratic process, and I really want to thank all of you for coming out tonight and for your patience. And congratulations, Mr. O'Brien. Welcome. And now can I get a, now can I get a motion to, since we don't have another closed session needed, can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Dana and Liz, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much.